Good evening. Welcome to the December 11, 2017 Board of Education meeting. Could we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here, thank you. So, the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes from October 23, 2017. Regular meeting, there was a November 4 special meeting and November 13 regular meeting. Motion to approve, please.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. So, do we have any written communication, Dr. Beavitts?
We have no written communication.
Okay, thank you. I know that we're gonna possibly change an item, move it up on the agenda. Are we ready to do that?
Yes. William, my microphone's flashing green instead of red. Is that okay?
It's Christmas.
Oh, it's flashing red there or green there?
It's a holiday too, yeah.
It is a holiday thing.
You know what, I'll slide over here in case, oh, never mind, I'm on. Yes. Madam President, if you and the board would consider moving the Finance Committee up as the first item tonight. We have an item before the City Council and our CFO, Mary Rodino, really needs to get over there if we could take this item first.
Absolutely, yes. So, Mary?
Yes. Thank you all for changing things up. Couple of other administrators are texting me updates to where they are in the council agenda, so I want to make sure that I'm there. Sorry. So, you do have a memo and a very large document in your packet, which is our annual audit or CAFR. We refer to it as CAFR. It's an acronym for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And I just have a really short seven or eight slides that I wanted to share with you for an overview, which is similar to what we talked about in our actual audit meeting last week. So, just an overview, we met as a committee on December 6, which is about the same time that we meet each year. We typically have one or two people from our audit firm come and we discuss the highlights of the financials and any other important information. They also present us with a couple of letters. One is regarding some advice and, you know, fraud detection type of advice. And then another one is what's called a management letter, which usually points out a couple of things that they would suggest that we can do a little differently. So, overall, though, the audit opinion was positive. They used to call this an unqualified opinion, which really confused people. So, now they just say that they had no significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, and in general, everything had a positive audit opinion. So, just a little summary, we had, and there's a little more detailed information in your actual board memo, but we had really moderate increases in revenue and expenses, with the exception of one item that's really beyond our control. A couple of years ago, there was a requirement that went into effect where we have to show the same number on our revenues and expenses and it's a representation of state retirement contributions which relate to TRS reporting. So, that number, off the top of my head, I think jumped from 16 million to 25 million. So, when we look at overall percentage differences, they end up looking kind of large. But when you take that item out, everything else was really a very moderate increase or decrease in, as far as revenues and expenditures go. So, it is a, it's not something that the district itself would be responsible for. It's a representation of retirement contributions that will be paid by our TRS employees into the retirement plan. And again, it's just for the TRS portion. So, other, when you take that number out, the other revenue and expense categories were pretty consistent with prior years. So, our education fund, our education fund balance increased by just under $3 million. This was mostly due to some one-time pickups, if you will, including, we had had an insurance accrual that had sort of built up over the last few years and we changed the way that we pay for insurance. We don't just pay a straight premium anymore, we pay based on our actual insurance experience. And even though we've had some good increases for things like baby booms, we also, we have also saved some money in what we've paid based on claims experience. So, as that accrual was building up on our books, the auditors suggested that we didn't need to have that accrual or liability on our books anymore because our experience in insurance claims has been lower. So, they actually suggested and recommended that we reduce that accrual, so it's kind of a pickup, if you will, but it's not something that you could expect to have every year. There was also something that some of you might remember. It's referred to as a couple of different things in Illinois. The personal property replacement tax or corporate property place, corporate property replacement tax. It's a revenue stream that were issued by the state of Illinois. Last year, we received notification from them that they had overpaid us and that they were going to be taking back about $250,000. So, last year, the auditors had us put it on our books as a liability and this year, the state, this year meaning fiscal 17, decided that they were not going to recoup that money. So, that was an extra $250,000 that we picked up that we weren't expecting. We also had some receipt of some of the state payments that had been in arrears. We had a good collection year for state and federal revenues. And we had some higher-than-expected property tax collections, partly due to new property and, and some things that are a little bit harder to anticipate. A portion of some TIF revenues rolled off and new property, which we're not always privy to in time to budget for it. So, overall, it was good news, but it's the kind of thing that we can't really count on year after year. So, just some highlights regarding our capital spending. You can see in the, in the audit numbers that we did have a large amount of capital spending in this year, meaning fiscal 17. Projects that were finished as part of fiscal 17 included the H-Hall renovation, library renovation, the upstairs theater slash kitchen building roof. Though many of those, some of those were still in progress, but we experienced a lot of the expenses in that year. So, expenses were up, but they may not all be reflected in the capital asset numbers. We typically go, I would say, a little cyclically sometimes in capital. We did have a big project year that year and I would say this past summer, we spent significantly less, which will be a reflection in the 18 audit. So, just a little information on our debt. In the summary letter to the audit, you can see that we talk a little bit about long-term debt and that was reduced by almost 2 million in the fiscal 17 year. This allows us to have the capacity to issue additional bonds in typically spring of 2018. We'll come back to the board when interest rates are favorable and that's how we'll fund the next two years of capital projects for the most part. As always, our capital needs do outpace available funds. In this audit, our depreciation was $3 million, so that's typically the minimum you'd want to put back into an entity to stay ahead of it. We can't afford that every year, we do it in some years, but not all. And it's important to keep those capital needs in mind, I think, when we have a surplus because we don't have a lot of debt capacity, so I think it's important to try to use a surplus in future years for capital. And just as a reminder, especially for the newer members of the board, in 2015, $5 million was transferred from our operations and maintenance fund out of fund balance into the capital improvements fund and that really gave a well-needed boost to some big projects that needed to be done. So, that's kind of what our policy pledges that we'll do when our surpluses or fund balance start to build up. So, not trying to sound like a broken record again, but just a reminder of some continued threats. We do have some inconsistency in on-time payments from state of Illinois. Some things are like clockwork and other things tend to lag depending on the state situation at that particular time. So, the rest of this year, I would say, we'll have to kind of wait and see what the timing is. We all know that there's a potential multi-year property tax freeze, a threat that's very real right now and I think that we will know more about that probably sometime in January, I would hope. Unfortunately, I think that we're going to have another, in December typically, we hear about the, what the new Consumer Price Index number is and I think that number is probably going to be higher than it was a couple of years ago and that would be the terrible ironic thing if, if we're finally starting to get some potential increases in our, in our Consumer Price Index, which allows our property tax levy to go up a little bit and then if there's a freeze, we wouldn't be able to capture that. Another continued threat that we do deal with on an ongoing basis is property tax appeals. Our attorneys do help us in conjunction with some of the other taxing bodies like District 65. We sort of try to combat those where we can together as a group. And then the continued deterioration of the TRS retirement system and the amount that we might be required to contribute. Our auditors actually pointed out in our meeting last week that the funding level of TRS has gotten even lower than it was in the previous year. Off the top of my head, I think it was around 40 the previous year and it was in the mid 30s for this past year. And that may have something to do with how that contribution required on our part jumped up quite a bit from 16 million to 25 million. And I think that's it. If there are any specific questions. But overall, good news and we did discuss some things at, at the committee level.
I'll, I'll just reiterate what you saw in your packet. We had a clean audit. We have had no significant issues whatsoever raised and we feel very good about the thoroughness of the audit firm.
I just have one question. Do we, pursuant to the mention in the audit letter, are we going to do this technology and data security risk assessment update?
Yes, that is, we did talk about those recommendations in the committee meeting and so my plan was to show that information to Mike Corcoran so that they could assess that. I, I do think, you know, we, each year, we answer a really detailed internal controls questionnaire for areas, all kinds of areas, as well as IT. So, Mike is involved in our audit in that way, so certainly we will pass that information on to him and let him.
Right, there's particular items here, I guess we just need to see whether we're doing.
Yes, and I, my guess would be some of them we are and some of them will be recommendations that certainly will be implemented, but yes, we will definitely pass that on and make sure that that is looked at.
Great, other questions?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Baum for his patience of wading through the audit report with all of the audit.
I'd say it was my pleasure, but that would be lying.
All right. Okay, thank you. Off to your next adventure.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, so we'll go back to our agenda, so we're at item number six. We have a report on student services and well-being.
Yeah, and that'll be Taya Kinsey, our Associate Principal for Student Services and our principal, Dr. Campbell.
All right, good evening. We, Dr. Campbell and I, are excited to be here tonight to talk about coming together and really talk about the why, how, and what of student well-being. And we're looking at this from the highlights of our whole school as well as our Student Services Department's efforts towards school goal number two on well-being. The why that we're going to talk about tonight is about our purpose. We are focusing on well-being for the very reason we exist as an institution for our students. When we talk about being mindful, when we talk about being fully present, it is our students who bring us back to that grounded moment every time. And while we are supported by the state of Illinois' social-emotional learning standards, we are also very much supported by our collective power at ETHS to support each student. So, the next thing that we need to talk about is the how. How we do this in terms of social-emotional learning lies in first, looking at the who. We engage in social-emotional learning with everyone who's important in this building. That means every student and every member of our school community, from our safety personnel, to our support staff, to our teachers, to you all as board members. It also means how we engage with our students and with each other because all of that impacts functioning and growth. It truly is not just what we do, but how we do it with each other. The what, Dr. Campbell and I are here together because we no longer separate social-emotional functioning and growth from other, other facets of a student. Their academic performance, identities, physical functioning, activities, or post-high school planning. All of these are impacted by social-emotional functioning. At the tier one or school-wide level, we are committed to each of us coming together to help shape the growth of our students. I was in a teacher's classroom just the other day and the teacher took the time to set expectations about working in groups, helping students understand how to listen to each other, how to respond to differences of opinion, it's not always easy to do, and encourage them to be followers and leaders at times, as well as to solve problems. And then normalize all of these experiences. Helping students grow these kind of social-emotional skills will ultimately support their academic performance. Then thinking about tiers two and tier three, we really acknowledge that when particular barriers or challenges are present for students, teachers and student services staff are committed to coming together to problem-solve and to keep problem-solving so that we can support student growth.
In our multi-tiered systems of support, which is commonly referred to as MTSS, tier one is our foundation. The steps that we take involve our stu, our school community and here are just a few highlights. One, we have executive functioning sessions for all of our freshmen in the freshman advisory study hall and we are looking to expand that in the future. We have curriculum on anxiety, depression, sexual assault awareness, and suicide prevention. Our meditation room, parent evenings, dress code, and board policy and administrative procedural are all the changes that are, all of these changes have been student-centered. Staff PD has focused on many areas, including suicide prevention, substance use, sexual harassment, LGBTQ plus youth, refugee students, and MTSS. PBIS, the prevention, PBIS, our prevention committee, and Wild Kids Futures Day also have an impact on tier one. And student-driven actions are the piece of this tier one effort as students want to be a part of helping other students grow at, at ETHS and we want them to, to learn as well. Students are planning ways to shift the culture every day from growing the culture of consent and addressing sexual assault to supporting LGBTQ plus youth, to addressing race inequity in our school, to engaging in random acts of kindness. Messaging also impacts our school community and last year, we began facilitating a culture shift with regard to course requests. We're asking that our school community, including parents and guardians and students, consider the context of the whole student's experience as they think about the student's academic challenges, extracurriculars, familial commitments, social-emotional needs, interests, goals, and community engagement when doing course requests. In other words, what we really want you to do when, when families are sitting down, doing those course requests, think about the whole context, think about what the requirements are. When we, when you talk about AP and all of the things that students are going to be taking here, we want you, families, to think about what the student's experience is going to be holistically. And this slide really summarizes, for me, a, a conversation in one particular stu, with one particular student that I've been watching for the past two years. Last year, as he made his transition to ETHS from District 65, he talked about, I noticed him and he and I have been working on a lot of his struggles. He had a few D's and F's and I could see our PBIS structure and I can see all of this work that we're doing kind of start to benefit him. And this year, he's got A's and B's. He's been nominated for Student of the Month two times in a row and he's now thinking through his actions and how he's been engaging with the school community. And I must say that, that, that the system is working. His teachers have been involved, his counselor has been involved, I've been involved, and this dean has been involved and we're really making a difference in this young man's life.
So, the next area we're going to look at are some of the outcome measures and a few highlights. We, one of the things we've worked very hard to do in the last few years is to redefine truancy. And what we've done is redefine truancy as a behavior and looking at it as just one element of a complicated student who needs support and who needs to be understood through teamed interventions. ETHS has been very committed to holding on to our students with new interventions and supporting them through those periods of truancy, rather than just simply considering dropping them. While we always have more work to do, we are very pleased that with our efforts thus far, 78% of our students are attending 95 to 100% of the time and 91% of our students are attending 91 to 100% of the time. And we have helped our students and our truant students reengage and move toward graduation. We've seen our graduation rate increase from 89.9% in 2014 to 93.6 in 2017. We're also happy that 68% of our students are very engaged in our school, school community. They're involved in clubs, fine arts, athletics, and that's really due in large part to the connections with ETHS staff members, as well as all of the fairs and events that facilitate engaging. We also wanted to note that this team, including the board, has really worked hard on ensuring equitable access to all students through a change in the board policy with extracurricular and co-curricular activities and that we've really been reframing extracurricular participation through the arts, sports, activities as an intervention strategy that can really help address school avoidance and increase re-engagement in academics and in the school community. So, the next area we want to address is our social-emotional wellness and we're going to start by talking about behavior referrals. Behavior referrals are not the same as suspensions, so we want to start by differentiating. They're just simply a referral of any significance. The thing that we want to celebrate is that it's very positive. 77% of our students did not earn even one behavior referral last school year and 5% of our students earned 69% of all our behavior referrals. In order to support these, these shifts, we've been focusing on behavior in classrooms, in hallways, in cafeterias, in study centers, but we're also looking at how do we support the 5% who in, who earn those 69% of behavior referrals? So, we've really been looking at how do we address our grade-level teaming? How do we continue to develop our restorative practices framework? How do we provide mental health support to the students who are telling us what they need with their behavior? And engage students in alternative to suspensions? Similarly, in terms of need, we are continuing to address anxiety and depression and it's growing here at ETHS, as is consistent very much with nationwide trends. As examples, many students have been repeatedly psychiatrically hospitalized and our McKinney-Vento or homeless student population has increased 20%. There is good news, though, and that is that students are accessing services. 27% of our students, per our ETHS Substance Use Behavior and Attitude Survey, have accessed mental health supports in and/or outside of school within the last year. And, as you can see here noted, over, we had over 2,000 office visits to ETHS social workers in first quarter of this year alone. We're also working on developing a student survey beyond our ETHS Substance Use Behavior Attitude Survey and the Illinois Youth Survey to ensure our awareness and access and the students' awareness and access to appropriate social-emotional supports, as well as to measure growth. All right, coming together. The other measure was really looking at academic performance and we're pleased that 86% of our students maintained or increased their GPA within the last school year. We've appreciated that this is addressed in tier one, but also by all the tier two and tier three interventions. We also know that increasing a sense of relevance helps engage our students in academic performance and to that end, we've been increasing the pathways to help students through technical programs, through focusing on the world of work, but also with college opportunities. We have an increase in 6% in the total number of students who applied to college from 2014 to 2017 and 80% of our class of 2017 black males applied to college. Lastly, the alternative school has also supported academic growth and re-engagement in school with over 101 students who have graduated from 2015 to 2017.
So, we will stay focused on our why and that is to help our students move through this wonderful life that can often be complicated. How we help our students involves a couple of things. One, it is how we engage with, how we engage with each other. Two, how we engage with our students. And three, how do we help our students engage with one another? That is staff modeling for each other for, with the expectations and the behaviors that we want from students. We, from our administrators to our support staff, must engage with each other as models for how and for the what of well-being. And that's to pair, and that is to paraphrase Holden Caulfield from Catcher in the Rye. Students can smell the phony anyway, anywhere. And essentially, we really want to model for our students the behavior that the adults are engaged in. The what involves all levels of support and intervention for our students' growth and problem-solving. So, there are SEL instructional moments, which we take each day to help the equity and the student identities that are remaining front and center of our youth so that we can facilitate and foster their academic growth.
So, lastly, we just want to say thank you. Thank you for coming together, for valuing each other, our staff, our students, and recognizing that truly every step matters. What and how we take each step leaves an imprint on our students. We want to say thank you for the hard work by all of our staff to meet the significant needs of our students demonstrated every day, but also for the leadership and voices from our students. Our students and our staff inspire us every day to do better. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you, thank you for that great report. Those slides were wonderful, thank you. Join the organization. Um, so questions from the board? Mike?
Uh, thank you, uh, Taya and Marcus. I really liked the report. I liked the, the data points that you covered. It was very informative. Uh, I think that, um, you know, I was really pleased to see the fidelity to the district goal, you know, that we set and, and, you know, laser-like attention to that goal, which, you know, we all know is so important. If I could make a suggestion, and I may be channeling my inner Gretchen here, I apologize. But a lot of this data would be a lot more informative for us if it showed year-by-year comparisons. You know, I know that this is probably the first year you, we constructed it this way because the goal was new, right? But I know we have a lot of that data going back that we could insert. And I, I don't want you to go back and spend time, well, somebody else might, but I don't necessarily need that, uh, to go back and do it again now. But in the future, I'm really hopeful that we can show the year-over-year change in all these attributes to really be able to spot trends. This is a great snapshot of where we are, and there's a lot of good news in here. There's a lot of things that points out where, yeah, we, we got some work to do, and that's good to know, too. But what it doesn't tell us is how we're trending. And that kind of leaves us to sort of think about how we feel we're trending, but sometimes data surprises us. So that, um, again, great report overall, but an improvement would be if we could show, um, you know, that data, a period of years, reach one of those data points to see how the trend looks. Thank you.
Thank you. I was just gonna add that we are committed to the same. And as we have become more of not just, um, talking about data, but really being data-based with regard to how we define social emotional functioning, um, it has allowed us to kind of grow that, hence some of the percentages, but we, we agree completely. So, thank you.
Pat?
Um, so yes, I wanna agree with Mark that this is tremendous. And I know that this report just speaks to volumes of work and hours, not just on the part of both of you, but on many, many others in the building. So, um, I'm really, I was really excited to read this report, and I think it speaks really highly of all the wonderful people in the building and all the work. I do wanna sort of emphasize two things that I think are really important. One is, and you touched on this, um, is the importance of every adult being supported and trained and ready to be that adult, right? Um, and I think, I mentioned this a couple of months ago when we talked about the change in our, our extracurricular, um, policy. I think, um, everybody has to be ready to deal with all kinds of things. And, um, and to not only deal with it, but be on the lookout because I think this is of, an impressive high school, no matter how you slice it. It's a great place, and it's because it's rigorous, because it's exciting, because there's so many things to do here. I think, you mentioned, our kids have a lot of struggle. Um, and they're juggling a lot, whether it's their course load or trying to play two different sports, or be in a play and play a sport, or whatever it is. There's crossovers where there's conflict. And, you know, we're asking fourteen and fifteen-year-olds to juggle things that are hard for us as adults to do in our work. And so I just really wanna make sure that that, that attention to detail is supported in every adult. And similarly, again, I think this is being done, but really the intentionality of peeling back our practice. Because we have all this wonderful, um, intention, and, and I think you're carrying it out, don't get me wrong, but you have to ever be vigilant about looking. Is this playing out the way we hoped it would? And are the adults doing everything and everywhere across the board? And I, I know that sounds Pollyanna, but we do have to strive for that because I think that's the, the way that we reach the most kids and support them as best we can. So, um, I really applaud all this work, and I just, I guess my, my point is to just charge on and, and do more and, and better because I think you're on the right path. So, thank you.
Yeah, your comments are spot-on. Um, as I think about our MTSS training, um, every single adult in this building went through our, uh, MTSS sort of baseline Tier One conversation. This is how you support students. Uh, they went through, um, some scenarios as to what, um, staff could do if students were encountering certain scenarios and situations. And so, um, it is our goal, and it is not Pollyanna. It's definitely something that we're s- w- looking and, uh, trying to, uh, achieve. And, uh, even staff who don't have day-to-day interactions with, with kids, uh, or with students, um, even the, the conversations with them is even more, uh, important to us because you just never know what day you're gonna encounter a kid and what you need to say and what you need to do. So, um, thank you for that, and that just sort of affirms how we, we plan to continue to move forward with this.
I would just add that the fact that you're focusing on this is right in line with what we're messaging about the what and the how. I was just having a conversation with a staff member today about the myriad list of things that had been done, but how we engage the student in the intervention, right? Not just the list of the what, but how do we truly engage students in what we're doing? And that's the tricky part for us as staff as well. So, thank you.
Jonathan?
Well, I had two questions, but Mark asked one of mine, so I only have one. You were talking about the growing anxiety and depression, and the numbers are really quite stark in here. Um, first quarter office visits for mental health services increased in the main social work office from seven-hundred-and-fifty-two to one-thousand-and-ninety-one. That's a forty-five percent increase. And my question is, do we have the staffing in place to meet that tremendously increased demand? Because I can remember a few years ago when we had substantially less demand, and students were still spending a fair amount of time sitting in the social work office waiting to be seen. So with a forty-five percent increase, are, are we meeting that demand?
So, um, I will say that the mental health team is very, very committed, um, working very hard on how to address, how to triage, right? Because many of these needs are walk-in. How the, how we can do that while making sure that we're doing referrals out, while making sure to group students in terms of needs. Uh, our psychologists have increasingly, um, played a presence in terms of mental health service provision, um, as a secondary piece to their role, as has, as have our counselors. Um, but we continue to look at, where is that need? How are we meeting it, right? And so while we are striving very hard to find new and creative ways to support our students, we recognize that there is tremendous need, and we're continuing to look at, uh, how, to what extent are we addressing that?
Well, I guess just to be blunt, I realize that, you know, money is always tight and everything, but I hope you will not be shy in the budgeting process in saying, you know, if we need more social workers or other professionals to meet this need, we, we need to do that.
Thank you.
Judy?
Thanks, Taya Marcus. I love the connection. Um, stressing that, um, the social emotional component of the student's life greatly impacts academics. I think it's great what you guys are doing. I love the report. My question, I have two questions. Um, the first one is, for those students that need, um, Level Two and Level Three interventions, what does that referral process look like?
So, um, in terms of, uh, um, kind of SST process, our student support teams, um, what we really encourage staff to do is reach out first, and parents to reach out first to counselors, is kind of that glue, that cohesive glue, um, for the student's, um, academic and behavioral life here at ETHS. We do have a system in place, um, that is a, you know, more advanced electronic system with regard to early identification process and teaming of the grade level team. And, and that has been broadened to each grade level with the psychologist, the counselor, the social worker, um, the dean, and the AIT Academic Intervention Team Advisor, so that their weekly meetings look at early identification first, because we wanna think about prevention at the Tier One, and then Tier Two, looking at early intervention. And then, um, in terms of the process, whether that's in email, whether that's in, um, face-to-face conversations, we put them through or through the, the early identification of concerns. And we put them through our, um, student support team process to be able to identify what needs to happen next and who to team with within the building and, as well as the parent guardian and student.
And then, um, the next question is, which kind of goes along with what you were just describing, um, with the process, the referral process. Is there, early on, um, when staff, when they, when they collaborate in the SST meetings, is data brought to that meeting? In other words, is there a system in place to gather data from the, uh, the classroom level, right? Since that's where the behaviors are coming from, then, uh, and then bringing that to SST to help inform, uh, the support team?
Yes, so when we're looking at kind of our beginning early intervention and early identification system, that is all, all electronically driven through our e-school system. Um, so luckily, our IIT team has worked with our Student Services team and done a fabulous job of identifying that so that we're looking quickly and efficiently at attendance. We're looking at behavioral issues. We're looking at grades. We're looking at additional risk factors, which may include McKinney-Vento status or transfer status, because we know that puts students even more at risk. So we're looking at both, um, factors that may be more mobile in nature and factors that may not, right? Um, so that helps drive our process. In addition to when we get to, um, an intervention meeting that is at a more of a two, Tier Two, Three level, with a family and the team coming together, we do have, um, our teacher feedback forms that really help systematize and scale where students are performing, as well as specific interventions that have been implemented in the classroom.
Okay, thanks. Does that, is al- that also inclusive of behaviors, the data collection? Okay.
Correct. Yes, it does. Thank you.
Other questions? Taya, um, you mentioned, just quickly, the, um, the changes that we made, equitable access. I know that this isn't the time really to, to hear about how that's going, but you seem to speak really positively of it. And, and, um, what are some of the changes that you have noticed? And is it, is it okay to kind of think about that a little bit at this point, either one of you?
So I know that, um, just even the talk among students, as well as among staff, is the level of excitement and opportunity. So I think there's definitely, and that's part of always what you wanna keep your finger on the pulse of within a community, of the, you know, both excitement for opportunity and for growth. Um, so I think there is that element, and we're gonna be measuring in terms of the quantitative element um, so that we can report to you accurately.
Yeah. I couldn't wait. I couldn't resist. Other questions? Thank you for this great report. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so Dr. Bravis is getting up as we get ready to hear the report on Oakton Community College Partnership.
And he'll be joined also by Dale Leepforth, the Chairperson of the Math Department.
Okay, so, uh, this is, uh, a very brief presentation on our, uh, Oakton partnership specific to math. Uh, last year, you may remember, Michael Carr from Oakton Community College joined us at this table. Michael currently serves as the Assistant Vice President for Academic Affairs and College Transitions. Now, Michael's not here tonight, but he sends his regards and wanted me to make sure to let everybody know, uh, that Oakton supports this work and is looking forward to the partnership, uh, where it's gonna go. And he's particularly excited about the data I'm going to share tonight because he shared it with me about three months ago and was very excited to share it with me. Uh, last year, uh, we talked about offering a transition to college math course, uh, Math One Ten here at ETHS. Tonight, I'm gonna share the results of that and what we're doing. But first, I think we have to go back and look at how students placed in, uh, to Oakton prior to the addition of Math One Ten. So here you see, uh, just to be brief, you'll notice that only fourteen percent, this is, this is previous to the change, only fourteen percent of students going to Oakton placed into credit-bearing math courses, while sixty-seven percent placed into what's called developmental, non-credit-bearing math. Now, we know from reading, uh, i- in the local national newspapers that placement into developmental math is one of the biggest barriers to college persistence. Kids get in a recursive process where they place into developmental math, they pay for developmental math, and they don't do well in developmental math, and they have to retake it. Uh, it's a very frustrating process. So in response to this data, uh, we partnered with Oak- and Oakton it fully acknowledged this at the table. They said, "This is a problem." Uh, so we partnered with Oakton to disrupt these placements, uh, and we offered Math One Ten, uh, for the first time last year here at ETHS. And I'm gonna let Dale explain this transitional mathematics course sequence, uh, and then I'll get on with the really exciting numbers. But I'm gonna let Dale do the graphic organization for us.
So keep it brief, but we'll put this in here, right? So we have, uh, highlighted in, in the light blue is our Intermediate College Algebra Honors Class. That's the Math One Ten class, and that is the, the last transitional math course before you go into credit-bearing math. So that's really the course that we wanna offer, um, in terms of setting up our students for opportunity at the next level. Uh, of course, if they go to Oakton, there's that immediate transfer into credit-bearing math, but we also see that, um, other institutions are also accepting of this course as well. Um, this year, we're actually running the course that comes before that, the prerequisite, Elementary College Algebra. We have three sections of that this year, O-seven-O. And then next year, um, we'll be starting our new course, College Algebra, which was approved last year, but we didn't have any students who were eligible for that yet. Uh, but some of our juniors in Intermediate College Algebra will be taking College Algebra. So you can see a suite of Oakton courses that'll help students transition to success. Um, and this really gets at the core of algebra, and this is in addition to our other Oakton course offerings that are listed on this slide as well.
So, uh, in terms of Math One Ten, now, we had forty-four, uh, students enrolled in Math One Ten, uh, but only sixteen decided to go to Oakton, uh, after taking the course. So sixteen matriculated to Oakton. Of those sixteen, fourteen of them placed directly into credit-bearing. Uh, sixteen, so that's eighty-seven percent of the students who, we would i- ideally like to see more of the forty-four students maybe go to Oakton. We didn't track where they went. Again, this data came from Oakton. But of the students who took Math One Ten at the high school, sixteen of them landed at Oakton. Fourteen of them landed in credit-bearing, college-level math courses. And two of them are finishing up Math Ten, Math One Ten. Now, when I say finishing up, Math One Ten is a module-based online course, uh, and the completed modules follow the student. So if a student completed four or five modules, they go to Oakton, and they have to complete one more module successfully. Uh, so that's how that works. So we see this as very promising. This data was shared, uh, with superintendents, uh, by, uh, at, at an Oakton meeting. We meet quarterly, uh, at Oakton, the superintendents, uh, that, uh, represent the district that Oakton serves. And this data was shared, uh, for the other schools who participated, and, and we, we did really well. Uh, really, really well. I'll brag it up. We, we were the top of the class for this. But, but so much so that, that Oakton is looking to expand these types of programs. Um, here are our current enrollments, so we built upon it. You'll see in blue are our previous, uh, enrollments. And this year, in orange, uh, to the right are, are enrollments going forward. So we're going from forty-four to ninety, uh, students enrolled in Math One Ten. And again, for the first time, we're offering developmental math. That's the O-seven-O. Forty-eight students are enrolled in that. So we're scaling this. Uh, but, you know, Oakton is also looking to expand dual-credit offerings in general, uh, for our students, as well as transition to college courses across the districts it serves, you know? Uh, some schools are piloting, uh, developmental, uh, English and writing, uh, as we speak. So, uh, hopefully in, in years to come, uh, based on how those results go, y- y- you could easily see us, uh, doing some of that work as well. Anything to add, Dale?
I think you, you summed it up pretty well. I could always add something. But, uh, you know, I think the, the opportunity provided for our students, and as you can see, more students, um, you know, signed up for that this year. And we'll have the students transition from the elementary to intermediate next year. So we'll have more students, um, you know, kind of moving through that pathway. And really, this is the core of algebra, um, kind of fundamental for success in the future. So whether or not they go to Oakton, they'll be prepared for success at the next level, so.
One small footnote that I wanted to, to mention, and that is that EdRed, our regional school advocacy organization, of which we are a member, um, is working on some, um, model legislation relating to the dual-credit, um, idea that would be implemented, um, obviously, if it passed, the state legislature would be effective across the state because there is some variation between- because there is some variation between, um, regions depending on what the feeder, community college may be. And we're trying to lead the way in that effort. And Pete has been kind enough to, to speak and work with our EdRed, um, uh, staff to try and get that framework pulled together. So there's a lot of stuff going on in that front, and it's a welcome change frankly from simply sitting back and trying to fight, um, the school funding reform and be reactive. We're trying to take a slightly different approach and be a little more proactive around this dual-credit thing, which is, which is a big deal. Thanks.
Other questions? Were, were you, were you done with your presentation? I wasn't sure.
Yeah, yeah. We have nothing new to report after this great report. But we are open and ready to answer questions.
Okay, all right. Jonathan?
I just, I just wanted to distill this down a little so I understand it. So the reason, the concern was that there were a lot of students going from ETHS to Oakton, taking developmental math, which was not credit-bearing, right? So, the, we changed the courses that we teach here so that more of those students would be prepared to go to Oakton and, and get there and take a credit-bearing course, right? So, the, and the course that isn't credit-bearing at Oakton is developmental math. And I think I heard you say, "For the first time, we're offering developmental math."
That's right. Yeah, for the first time this year, we're offering developmental.
And, and so the idea is that if you can take the developmental math here at ETHS, then by the time you finish ETHS, you go to Oakton, you can take the, the credit-bearing.
Yeah, the, i- i- it all is contingent upon successful completion of the modules, just like 110. So they're essentially the same type of course. They're a gateway course. Both of those function as gateway courses to Oakton. Um, and yeah, the idea is to create those pathways early, uh, and to get kids onboarded so that, so that they don't take two, three semesters of, uh, and get frustrated taking developmental math or not, you know?
And the fourteen students who went to Oakton out of the forty-four students, who were eighty-seven point five percent, yeah. You said that they came out of a group of forty-four students.
Forty-four.
Do we have any idea what happened to the other thirty?
Not right, not for this report, I don't. Um, it would be interesting to look at to see what colleges they attended and if they, you know, if they, um, you know, if they're persistent in their college going. But, um, for this purpose, they tracked the sixteen that actually did matriculate to Oakton. It's promising. More to report next year. This is an annual.
This is new. This is an annual, so it's, it's a matter of finding the students who are, who would be eligible.
Yeah, and I think if you go back to the pathway slide, the, uh, elementary college algebra course, um, mirrored our Bridge Two algebra course. So students would come out of geometry and take that. Um, they could take two algebra the following year, or they could continue on the Oakton pathway. We already heard about well-being and counseling and how we're surrounding our kids with support. So we would make decisions along the pathway, um, in terms of what would be best for them. And we'll have those conversations where in placement right now. So, I mean, we, we also had, uh, give a shout out to the teachers. I mean, they did the hard work with the kids, um, and, and there's more and more based on the, the addition of the courses. So they've done an amazing job with, with the kids who basically are, you know, everybody's moving at their own pace. So it's a difficult course to teach, but it really helps to, to stretch the, the students. And the teachers have, have been amazing in terms of those efforts, so.
Other questions? Monique?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I'm guessing that this also helps those students that could be going to four-year colleges but entering on maybe probation, or they have to take a, a math entry class or, or test or something of that sort. So not just Oakton, but, you know, maybe the other students went somewhere else and it was a four-year college, but then they entered better than they would have had they not participated in this.
Right, so I mean, I have anecdotal data, you know, maybe National Student Clearinghouse will give us some, some secrets to that. Um, but I know that this is a, a pretty standard, you know, course. And it is, I can't say it's transferable. It depends, a- as, as many things do in this, in this arena. But, um, you know, I have a student right now who's not going to Oakton, but this class, completion of this class will be valuable to them as they move to, to the university. So, um, it's a pretty standard class. You know, it's the last transitional math class before credit-bearing math. It's pretty standard at community colleges around. So, um, even if you're going to a four-year college or a university, there's a potential for it to, um, help with placement. Um, and if not, most of those schools are gonna have some form of placement exam. And this gets to the core algebra that's gonna be on that anyway. So that's what we say to kids. If you're going to Oakton, that's easy. Uh, if you're going somewhere else, it might help for placement. But for sure, as you kind of solidify these core algebra skills, you'll be ready for that, um, exam or course that you're gonna take at the next level. So, uh, we've only found it to be helpful. Anecdotally, I, I can tell some stories about where they've gone, but that's just hard data to collect. Oakton automatically shares, obviously, the data with us for that, so.
Great. All right, thank you. Thank you so much. All right. So moving right along, we are at item number eight. Um, comments from the public. Dr. Beavis, what do we have?
We have six folks signed up, uh, for public comment this evening. Um, just a reminder, public comment is, uh, three minutes. Uh, what I'll do is, I have a timer. I, I get that job, so I'll time you for three minutes. I'll do a courtesy of when you have one minute left, I'll go like, you know, one minute. Uh, and then the alarm will sound, I'll fumble with the phone. And if you could complete your sentence, that would be great. And then we'll keep it moving. And then I will call you in order that you signed up. So first person signed up is Ann Genler. Oh, and it's from, uh, you can do it from there.
Is the mic on? Turn the mic on.
Press the button. One more.
One more.
One more, the red light will...
There you go.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Uh, first, I wanted to thank you all, Dr. Campbell and all the members of the board for your commitment to our students and for being here and giving us a chance to share our concern with you. I have sort of two aspects to what I want to say. One is just personal, my, my son, and, uh, I hope you'll bear with me on that. And other people might address other aspects of, of what we want to say. But, um, my son Noah Lieb is a sophomore here. He's a good student, he's a strong athlete, and he's taking Hebrew. Um, it's an important class for him, and he's at an upper level in the Hebrew class. So he's been taking it with Anna Riber and was looking forward. His concern is that he knows that colleges want three years of a foreign language. And he would like to be able to do that in Hebrew, which he's been studying for a long time. He'd like to complete that. As people addressed you about social, emotional well-being and academic excellence, I was thinking about how Hebrew relates to that and is so important for him in those aspects. I have lived in Evanston for more than twenty years, and part of why I moved here was because of the high school. And it's only for the last two years that I've been able to benefit from that and have my son actually in the high school. One of the things I had always heard about the high school was that it had this traditionally really strong program in Hebrew, which was exciting, a little bit surprising and amazing to me. And it was something that I was looking forward to and, and counting on. And so I guess we're a little bit late. I just, I feel like you're gonna be letting my son down by shutting the program down. What we've been told is that it's not possible to find a teacher. And, and we're having, I, I'm having a little trouble. I, I would like to know more about how you've looked, and I just believe there must be a teacher out there if the will is there. And then, so just moving away from the personal, and I'll wrap up, 'cause three minutes is three minutes. I believe that it's an important strand in the community. And the, like that parable about the sticks where one stick is weak and you can easily break the stick that is the Hebrew language program. We have a bundle of sticks. It's all the languages, all the classes you offer, everything at Evanston, and all the people at Evanston, and we ought to stick together and not be broken. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Benny Swizlow.
Shalom. I could stand right here and talk to you in a foreign language and you would understand absolutely nothing. And now that I'm speaking into, in English, I see that we've connected. And that's what world languages are all about, is making the connection. What is so incredibly awesome about Evanston High School is the diversity of the students and the diversity of the world languages that have been offered at your school for so many years. It's a huge world with an amazing social media. And as soon as students learn a second language, a third language, a fourth language, they learn another way of how to communicate and how to, to solve problems. Speaking in one language is only speaking in one culture. If they're offered the opportunity to learn other languages, they learn that there's a, a whole world of ways of solving, um, of solving world problems out there. And it's only through communication. Uh, Nelson Mandela said this. He said, "If you talk to a man in a language he understands, that goes to his head, 'cause he speaks that language. But if you talk to him in his own language, that goes to his heart." That's where I am imploring you to continue the Hebrew language department at Evanston High School. I professionally work at the I Center. I have placed teachers in the past. We have to understand where you want to start history. In two thousand and fifteen, which is not historically a long time ago, you had seventy students, um, learning Hebrew at Evanston High School. Prior to that, you had a teacher for seventeen years. And there were ninety students studying Hebrew on a continual basis, year after year. Anna Riber, you are now sharing with Niles North. She, the program was cut as soon as Anna explained that she cannot continue to teach, um, duly between Niles North and Evanston. And that's when you said, "That's it. We're not going back to the drawing board to try and find a teacher." Excuse me. I am telling you, there are teachers out there. There may not have been in the past, but I have very viable candidates that I would like to have the opportunity to share with you. Thank you.
Next is Dr. Jill Bishop.
Good evening. Um, I came directly from a snowball fight with an eleven-year-old, so please forgive my informal dress. Uh, my name is Jill Bishop. I'm a linguistic anthropologist. Uh, I looked at, uh, my doctoral work was on the intersection between language and culture among speakers of a dying dialect of Spanish, uh, spoken by the descendants of the Jews who were exiled from Spain in fourteen ninety-two. Uh, I am a former language instructor. I taught English and Spanish at the high school and college level. Uh, I'm a business owner here in Evanston. I own a translation agency. We translate in seventy-five languages, uh, for organizations of all different types across the world. Uh, I'm also a mom of a sixth grader at Haven. Uh, we moved here from Chicago three years ago. And when we decided we were leaving the city, there was no question at all about where we would end up. And one of the compelling reasons was Evanston High School and the Hebrew program. Um, I didn't want my son to be one of the few Jews in his class. And the fact that there's a large Jewish community here, as evidenced by the strong Hebrew program, was exceptionally compelling for me. There was, um, reference earlier to the sense of relevance that the students here have. And kids that have relevance or feel that sense of relevance with the topic that they're studying and the connection, um, inspires them to continue learning. Um, I'm sure you all know that many kids graduate from, from high school and from a high school language program, and they can hardly say a sentence. And it's often because of the teachers, and it's often because, uh, uh, the quality of, of foreign language teaching, which hasn't been as, as good as it could have been. And I, I don't know how it has been here, so I don't want to offend any, or set any expectation that the language training here has been anything but exceptional. But oftentimes, language is taught in a way, kind of in isolation of the speakers. And there's no connection between the kids and the language. Um, kids who are learning Hebrew have a connection here. Um, and it's essential that you build on that connection, and that's inspiring and motivating. As a business owner, as owner of a translation agency, I need linguists. And I need linguists in as many languages as possible. I'm hiring hundreds of linguists across the world to translate documents, uh, to transcribe audio.
One minute.
Thank you. To subtitle and to do voiceover to help create connections. And we need as wide of an offering as possible so that there are as many opportunities as possible for kids to learn language, become linguists. Whether they become linguists or they just use it in their, in their daily life, we need opportunities for these kids to learn. Uh, there is a petition that I'm sure you're aware of on change.org. Um, I just checked my phone, and there are two thousand one hundred and sixty-six people that have signed onto a petition to save the Hebrew program here at Evanston. Many of those are former Evanston students, many are Evanston residents. But this is also an issue that has been, um, spread throughout the country. So everybody's eyes are on Evanston as you make this decision. I know that there are candidates available, and it just takes one good candidate, um, to, to become your next Hebrew teacher and grow this program. And I really implore you, as a resident, as a business owner, and as a mom of a future Evanston High School student, um, to do everything possible within your power to save, uh, the Hebrew program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I got this. There we go. Mind of its own. Got it, all right. Next up is Sage Jacobson.
Hello. So my name is Sage, and I'm a sophomore. And I'm currently in Hebrew Four honors here. This coming semester, I'll be studying abroad in Israel. And it's very important to me to be able to come back to ETHS, knowing that I'm gonna still be able to speak Hebrew. I know a lot of incoming freshmen from outer activities such as Jewish day camp and, um, and youth groups who are very excited and feel very connected to the language. And they're really looking forward to next year or the year after that, coming and speaking Hebrew here. My siblings, who are now twenty-four and twenty-one, learned and benefited from having Hebrew in the school. It helped them feel very connected to the language and helped them adjust to where they moved, which is Israel. Um, Hebrew and Israeli club are very inclusive welcoming and a safe community for Jews as well as the larger community at ETHS. I feel that having Hebrew at the school helps us be more aware of the history and the Israeli culture, as well as the language. Israel is constantly in the news, but it's important to have a representation of Israel and Judaism in the school. Having Hebrew class in school has not only impacted my siblings and my decision to do a semester abroad in Israel, but also last year it helped me decide to do an Hebrew immersion program for seven weeks. Please consider keeping the Hebrew program, not only for the past students who were lucky enough to be given the connection to Israel and Hebrew, but also for the incoming freshmen who feel the exact same way. Please don't let down the future of ETHS Hebrew students. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Sarah B. L. U. Bloom. Got it.
Hey, everyone. I'm Sarah. I'm a junior here. And, you know, it's really great that we have this opportunity to get to speak to all of you guys and, uh, share some of our thoughts. So I'm also in the Hebrew program here at ETHS. I started in Hebrew Four. I took Hebrew Five last year, and I'm doing an independent study this year. And so I, I know there's like been a lot of talk within the administration, and obviously, a lot of people are here to share their, um, their opinions. So I'm just gonna talk a little bit about like why the Hebrew program was so impactful, like to me personally. So I came from a really small Jewish day school. Um, there's ten kids in my graduating class. You know, coming to ETHS, I knew the grand total of like three people. So knowing that I could walk into my second-period Hebrew class and like see all of their faces, that was something that was just comforting like beyond words. I can't even express how, you know, welcomed and just like, it's kind of like a breath of like, "Okay, you know, I can do this." So Hebrew class became kind of my sanctuary from the overwhelming size of the school. I mean, I know all of you can tell, this is a giant building, there's a ton of people. You walk in, especially as a little freshman who doesn't know anyone, it's really scary. And Hebrew really helped me to feel comfortable in this environment because it was just, it was so different from anything that I was used to. Um, and even now, Hebrew class continues to serve as that haven for me. It's a place where I know that I'm always gonna feel safe, always feel surrounded by my friends. 'Cause of the small size of the program and the way in which the class is taught, I became close with all the people in my class. Um, we formed a really tight-knit community. And that's something that's true, not just for people who come from really small Jewish day schools like I did. You know, something that's really special about the Hebrew program is that it meets you where you're at. If you don't know any Hebrew, great, here's Hebrew One. If you've been to a Jewish day school, great, start in Hebrew Four. But there's an option for everyone. And anywhere you end up, it really becomes this really inclusive community, which is really important to me. It's really important to making our students feel welcome, really important to anyone who takes this program, who... my studies for middle school, because I was one of those people who got to take this language in middle school. At a very rigorous pace and a high level, and of course, I'm a junior, I have the college process on my mind all the time. So knowing that I have this unique language, knowing that I have this on my transcript, that I study this language at a really high level is really important to me. I know that this is something that'll enhance, enhance my college prospects. And, you know, only 21 public schools across America actually have a Hebrew program. So I think it's really special that E T H S is one of those 21. I'm continually grateful for that opportunity, for the opportunity to be able to form these meaningful connections with my peers, have a home base in an at first really intimidating environment, and also the opportunity to advance my studies in an academically rigorous and culturally validating manner. My experience with the E T H S Hebrew program set a profound impact on me both as a student and as a person, and all I can say is I really hope that future wild kids will have the chance to say the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Nehana, and the last name starts with an M, sorry. Morton. Got it.
My name is Nahama Morton. I have three kids. I'm a resident of Evanston. Two out of the three took Hebrew. Well, one is currently taking Hebrew, and my older one, um, graduated and took Hebrew all four years. And my third one, the middle one, who took, uh, a different language, actually said, "I wish I took Hebrew." So I'm, uh, I'm, I'm showing you that, you know, there are families here, that it's really important to them that their kids taking the Hebrew. So even though I speak Hebrew at home with my kids, I never taught them how to write and read, um, because that's not something, you know, a mom has. I don't have time to sit down and teach them how to, I mean, I read them in Hebrew, but... So having the Hebrew class was really great because my kids actually learned how to read and He-, uh, read and write in Hebrew, which is, uh, my, you know, my mother language. So as a mother and, you know, I'm, I'm grateful that all those years, um, you had the Hebrew, the Hebrew program. Just a little note, um, well, I think over 15 or 20 years ago, I was the Hebrew teacher here, right after Dr. Dalal. And I remember, you know, I did it for one year and realizing that I am not good enough to teach the language. Knowing the language, I don't know, it's not enough to be a teacher. And I think that what, um, Benny is, um, saying is that there are really qualified people out there that can teach the language. I wasn't one of them, and I was happy to step back, and Smadar was the one that took the, you know, the, the job after me. And, and she grew the, the, you know, the program tremendously. So I think having the last, you know, when Smadar left, it was really a difficult thing for our community in the last two years that, um, they have, um, sharing a teacher. There are really good teachers out there. There are people here that really want to learn a language. It was important to me, it was important to my children. You know, I really, uh, you know, I'm urging you thankful that you will vote to continue with this program because it's, it's more than, it's, it's, as, as Sarah says, that for my kids, it was a place to, you know, engage with the other students and feel good and, and, and have like a home base, um, in this big, huge place. Because if you're not an athlete and if you're not, you know, doing something else, at least you have the Hebrew place to go. And they learn how to cook and have fun in the holidays. So I, I really hope you will vote to keep the program. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes tonight's public comment.
Okay. Thank you. So, um, we are at FOIA requests. Dr. Beavis? You have three?
Uh, there are three FOIA requests, Meadows, Gavin, and Zoller, and response in your packet.
Thank you. All right. Board committee reports. Do we have any committees who have met? I think we do. Okay. So we are at our student board report.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me, and welcome to the last nine school days before winter break. I said I'm counting. Last week, E T H S hosted the annual distinguished alumni awards. Um, and this all senior assembly served to show students what life after high school may look like. Um, and of course, it honored several E T H S grads. Students witnessed where an E T H S education can get you in the worlds of business and mathematics and social sciences. Even with the winter recess on their minds, E T H S seniors welcomed back a group of fascinating individuals. Last week, students sat and met with Dr. Campbell and Ms. Kinsey to discuss, to discuss initiatives to combat rape culture within the school. Um, and we formed a tentative plan to emulate the Men Taking a Stand seminar hosted by the Y W C A last spring. The plan includes several small conversations between adult mentors and young men participating in athletics about fostering positive masculinity. It is imperative that E T H S respond to rape culture proactively for the safety of all students. This, this series of in-school conversations will be part of the Sexual Assault Awareness Month coming April. And building on, uh, combating rape culture, um, E T H S impressed many students with the new Body Positive Dress Code, and as a result, several students have been interested in expanding the policy for all students enrolled in Evanston public schools and are discussing with District 65 to, um, create a really cohesive dress code for the city. Uh, that is all I have for you today. Thank you, and see you in the new year.
Thank you. Thank you. Back to Witherspoon.
Nine days, and pretty soon it'll be down to hours and minutes. Thank you. Uh, one of the things I was going to highlight was the Distinguished Alumni Award, and thank you, Emma, that was a, a nice encapsulation of that. I just might, uh, give my kudos to our senior class. I thought that, uh, our, uh, you know, seven, eight hundred plus seniors, uh, were just a fabulous audience, and the, uh, the alums really commented on that. And I think, uh, I guess they had high expectations anyway, but I think that, uh, you know, people who've not been around a high school for a number of years, uh, to come into a setting like that and be so warmly received by a whole senior class, I, I thought that was great and very proud of all of you. Also, uh, the, uh, it's rumored to have been announced, the Illinois State Scholars List, which is now available, and we have 218 students from E T H S who have been identified as Illinois State Scholars. So, uh, you can check that list out, uh, as well. Mainly, I just want to highlight some upcoming events, so that folks will have them in their mind and get them on their calendars. Um, we have our, um, annual Pathways to AP Forum. That'll be taking place, uh, this Thursday, December 14th, at 6:30 PM. That's, uh, held in the auditorium, and students in grades seven through 11, uh, are invited to attend that, and, and parents and guardians are also very welcome. That's always a good program. And again, we know that there are seventh and eighth graders who are already looking ahead, uh, to the Pathways to AP, and we love to have them. And they get to hear from a panel of our students who, uh, who can really talk with firsthand knowledge. Uh, our, um, Fall Play, uh, Noises Off is being, uh, held this week. It's in our upstairs theater, as usual. It's, uh, this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and tickets can either be purchased online in advance or at the box office each evening. It's a 7:30 performance. This Sunday, December 17th, is our annual holiday music festival, where all of our music program comes together. Uh, if you've never been to this free concert, uh, believe me, this is a great concert. Starts at 3:00 PM Sunday afternoon. Um, and, and if you have been there before, I certainly want to just remind you, uh, about the, this year's upcoming conference. Couple of reminders, uh, we will indeed be on winter recess. That'll be the December 25th through January 7th. And I want a notation that we will have a somewhat early dismissal, um, on Friday to December 22nd, and that'll be at 2:36. School will resume at the regular time on Monday, January 8th. And already looking ahead, after the winter break, uh, there will be no school on Monday, January 15th. Then we'll get into semester exam week, which will be the 16th through the 18th, and then makeup day for final exams will be January 19th. And did I just talk about the end of the semester? And that concludes my report.
Wow. The year goes by quickly. All right. Okay, so we've already done the audit committee, so we're on actions. And our first action item is approval of resolution regarding superintendent and board communications. And I believe, Monique, you're going to read this to us?
Whereas the Evanston High School District 202 Board of Education consists of seven board members, the board's power and duties include the authority to adopt, enforce, and monitor all policies for the management and governance of the district. Whereas as stated in the board member oath of office prescribed by the school code, a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and whereas the board has adopted the board member code of conduct as District Policy 282, and whereas each board member pledges to do his or her utmost to represent the public interest in education by adhering to the standards and principles in the code of conduct, and whereas the board has established and approved board agreements that it revisits and updates annually, and whereas the board, its individual members, and the superintendent commit individually and collectively to stand by these agreements, and whereas board members and the superintendent recognize that a relationship which encompasses mutual trust, support, and cooperation is essential to the smooth and effective operation of the district, and whereas board members and the superintendent reaffirm a no-surprise approach to the business during or between meetings as a sign of respect for all participants and the process, and recognize, and rec- and recognize that this approach is necessary for minimizing legal liability, and whereas the board and superintendent function most effectively and establish trust by communicating with integrity and honesty, and whereas it is vitally important to the health of the organization that the superintendent and board president be able to communicate with confidence directly with the board, and whereas the board expects and is most effective when there is open, confidential, timely, and forthright communication from the board president and the superintendent. Therefore, be it resolved that when the superintendent or board president communicates district information exclusively to the board and/or other school district administrators in an email or other written communication, board members shall adhere to the following practices. One, assume the communication is confidential unless it states otherwise. And two, maintain the confidentiality of the communication unless, A, the author of the communication grants consent to the board member to share the communication with a specific third party, or B, extraordinary circumstances exist, and the board member reasonably believes that there is a legal obligation, or it is in the best interest of the school district to share the communication with a third party, and the author is unlikely to consent to release of the communication. In such a case, the board member shall, unless legally prohibited, um, first seek guidance and/or inform the board president, superintendent, or board attorney prior to sharing the communication with a third party. Adopted this 11th day of December 2017, um, by roll call vote as follows.
Thank you for reading all of that. Um, could we have a motion second, please?
So moved.
All right, I'll second.
Um, so there's a motion on the table. Do you have a, do you have?
Discussion.
Yeah. Do you have a discussion? Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, this resolution, this gag rule, is an unconstitutional prior restraint on board members' freedom of speech in violation of the First Amendment. But perhaps more importantly, it is a repudiation of any commitment to transparency. A board of education is not a club or a secret society, it is a public body. By making non-disclosure of communications among members of a public body the default position, subject only to certain exceptions, this resolution reverses the presumption in the Open Meetings Act and FOIA. Under those laws, a communication among members of a public body is presumptively public and can only be shielded from public scrutiny if it falls within certain narrow exceptions. Further, this resolution, unlike those laws, contains no criteria whatsoever for what makes a particular communication confidential, or what constitute extraordinary circumstances that if reasonably believed by a board member, free that board member from this resolution's gag rule. And who even makes those determinations? The resolution doesn't tell us. Members of a public body...
...accessed by all persons to public records promotes the transparency and accountability of public bodies at all levels of government. It is a fundamental obligation of government to operate openly and provide public records as expediently and efficiently as possible in compliance with the act. I'm going to read just a little bit more, uh, restraints, um, on access to information to the extent permitted by this act or limited exceptions to the principle that the people of this state have a right to full disclosure of information relating to the decisions, policies, procedures, rules, standards, and other aspects of government activity that affect the conduct of government and the lives of any or all of the people. The provisions of this act shall be construed in accordance with this principle. The act shall be construed to require disclosure of requested information as expediently and efficiently as possible, and adherence to the deadlines established in the act. The last and one of the most critical provisions of this act relates to the presumption. The presumption is that all records in the custody or possession of a public body are presumed to be open to inspection or copying. Any public body that asserts that a record is exempt from disclosure has the burden of proving that by clear and convincing evidence that it is exempt. Sorry to read such, um, lengthy excerpt from the statute, but I think it's critically important to understanding what we're facing here. There have been both court cases and opinions issued by the Public Access Counselor of the Attorney General's Office interpreting FOIA, and I have certainly not reviewed them all, but I can tell you that on multiple occasions, the PAC has ruled in favor of disclosure, supporting the presumption of openness. In one notable opinion, the PAC ruled that no exceptions to disclosure applied, even in the case of a confidentiality provision contained within a settlement agreement to which the public body was a signatory. In another, the PAC rejected the argument that a home-rule public body could supplant or supersede FOIA, a state law, and withhold requested documents. In both cases, the state law presumption of openness controlled. I have little trouble making the case that the governing board of a public body, E T H S, cannot shelter its correspondence from public scrutiny through a mere resolution cloaking an entire category of communication as private, even before that communication has been created. In fact, the Attorney's General's Office has made clear in its guidance document on FOIA that FOIA constitutes the minimum requirements for public disclosure. It does not preclude a public body from adopting more strict standards, and the example they give is that a public body may require a response within three days instead of the legally mandated five. A public body cannot move in the opposite direction and shield communications that fall within FOIA. As I stated at our last meeting, when others on this board argued that all communications between board members and the administration should be confidential, there is no blanket privilege that attaches to communications between board members of a public body and those who work for the body. Both the FOIA and the Open Meetings Act make clear that publicly elected officials who are charged with spending public money may not conduct the business of the public in private. For this reason, no member of a public body should be communicating about matters that they would not like to see made public. But more importantly, the law gives the public a way to hold its elected officials accountable for things they say, so that officials cannot take one position in public, but behind the scenes, take quite a different position. These laws are so important that elected officials are required to undergo training so they understand the law and abide by it. Given the narrowness of the exceptions to the presumption of disclosure, the proposed resolution reflects a fundamental misreading of the purpose of the law. Finally, there's no reason given and no justification for a special privilege that attaches only to the board president, cloaking only her... cloaking only her communications. In fact, time and again, the IASB, the Illinois Association of School Boards, has described the board president as first among equals. In other words, the one who may get information first but not the one who is entitled to hold that information to herself. All board members are entitled to the same information. As an attorney, no longer active in a firm whose practice consisted of civil litigation and some civil rights work, I have seen my share of attempts to obfuscate, delay, and impede justice even by those who hold the public trust. I am now in my ninth year of service on this board, having been elected three times, and I have served two years as board president. Never during this time have I encountered a more dangerous attempt to undermine the public trust than in this proposed resolution. I'll be voting no, and I urge my fellow board members to do the same. Thank you.
Dr. Witherspoon.
Yeah, maybe I can put your minds at ease. I've had a detailed conversation with our school attorney. This in no way makes any communication exempt from FOIA. He explained clearly to me that an expectation of confidentiality in sharing an email in no way exempts it from the Freedom of Information Act. So there is nothing, and again, our attorney reviewed this carefully. There is nothing in here that exempts any of these emails from FOIAs or exempts them from the Freedom of Information Act. It's simply outlining a protocol for how, and he says, but there's nothing illegal for an expectation of confidentiality when exchanging an email with somebody even though it could indeed be FOIA'd. Two different things. And he went through the distinction in the law with it. So I really want to make sure that this is not done randomly, that it's been reviewed by a legal counsel. It is in no way infringing on Freedom of Information Act or infringing on FOIAs. Any of these emails can and could be FOIA'd. And unless they somehow qualified for an exemption, they would indeed be released. But in terms of when an individual is communicating an email to another person, it is perfectly, perfectly acceptable for a certain level of expectation of confidentiality. And the expectation that the sender, in sending that email, would certainly be asked or consulted with before that email were shared with anybody else. I don't know of a mayor, an elected legislator, a superintendent, or anybody who automatically puts all of their emails on their website. And they do communicate back and forth with an expectation that they're communicating with that person or with that very specific group of people. And normally, instead of some kind of unilateral action, if somebody has a desire to share that specific email, not the information in it, which information can be shared at any time, but the actual email, that it's not without possibility that it might be considered that there could be a protocol about consulting with the sender if you're actually going to share their specific email. So I do want to put your minds at ease. I actually consulted with the school attorney because President Savage Williams instructed me to do that. And I talked in detail with him, and he was very clear about that distinction. So there would be no, there would be no FOIA violation whatsoever. And it would never exempt these, any of these emails from being FOIA'd.
Yeah, can I, I may be the only one at the table that didn't prepare deeply for this resolution. I saw it, you know, and it came out in the pack on Friday, Thursday, or Friday. And I gotta say, I didn't read any of what Jonathan or Gretchen were saying into this. I mean, I, let's get real for a minute. We all know why we're here. We're here because there's a serious, there was a serious difference that came up with the disclosure of some emails and some intervention by a board member into a school problem, a personnel issue, and a student newspaper issue that, you know, we had some serious disagreement. And many people on the board felt like a member had violated the code of conduct. Pretty clear to me. So that's why we're here. So it seems to me that we're doing a resolution that is just trying to say, hey, let's reaffirm how we're gonna communicate and what we're gonna protect so that there's some level of confidence between the superintendent and the board and between board members. You know, I don't read into this any attempt to obfuscate, to hide from the public anything. I mean, common sense tells you when you're on this board, there's a lot of what goes back and forth that should necessarily, for the good of the school and the people involved, be kept confidential. And Dr. Witherspoon's right, it doesn't mean that it couldn't be FOIA'd. And Gretchen's right, we shouldn't, we shouldn't put anything in email that, you know, except with the thought that this could become public. But that doesn't mean that we should just be sharing and sending stuff out indiscriminately in any way. So, you know, I don't see the danger in this. I don't think it's dangerous. I don't think it's, you know, you know, if there's specific language in here that would make people more comfortable, my objective here would be to simply reaffirm what we should reasonably be doing. This shouldn't be this complicated. It's not a complicated issue. And I think by blowing it out of proportion, it just, you know, it kind of brings us right back to where we were last month.
Pat.
Thanks. So I, I'm grateful for the legal advice, because obviously that's important. And I think, I mean, as most of you know, my day job is communications and transparency in education and using community engagement and communications to support schools and students. So I am very much in favor of that, and I think we have to be mindful of that. However, I think in this instance, what we're talking about is not keeping information from the public so much as providing an opportunity to have discussions. So I'm thinking of very practical things. I think I have found very helpful the fact that the superintendent and the board president, mostly the superintendent, will send the board emails before he really knows what he has in front of him. But to let us know something's up. And there, we don't know what it is yet. It could turn into a personnel issue. It could turn into a legal issue that we are, you know, required to keep confidential. But I think having the understanding through our code of conduct that it's, you know, these communications are going to be held in confidence allows for information and dialogue to happen. Not that we don't end up talking about that with the public at some time, but I think having those confidential conversations initially are important to keeping the board informed and a level of trust that the superintendent has in us to keep that information quiet until we know what it is. Because often we don't when something happens in the school. And we've gotten those emails related to lots of things that happen here. And I appreciate being informed. Even though I don't talk about it, I'm glad to know when down the road someone asks me a question, at least I was informed and I have some understanding of what's before the school. So I think it's more a matter of our ability to work together. And of course, we have to stay within the bounds of the law. And of course, we have to be transparent to our community. And I think we do that. But this, I don't feel exceeds either. I didn't, I now know it doesn't exceed any legal issues. And I don't think it exceeds the transparency issue. So I'm in favor of this resolution.
Monique?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, this has absolutely nothing to do with our lack of transparency to the community. Absolutely nothing. So I just can't buy into that. But what this does for me is that, as Mark and Pat mentioned, this is about how we communicate as a board with integrity. It's basic. It's that simple. It's not blown out. It's not anything other than that. It is how we communicate as a board with integrity, how we move forward. So to say that we're trying, or we're not being transparent to the community is not truthful. That's, you know, we're putting a message out there that's not the truth. This is about board dynamics. This is about communication. This is about holding each other accountable for how we share information and information, when information should be shared or not. It's about confidentiality that we all deal with in some aspect. You know, whether on our job or as a public servant. So I think we just have to be very real about what this is. I, my mind is blown that we're taking it to this extent. Because it's, in its essence, it's all what we agreed to do when we took it off. So.
Jude?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, like, my reference point for this situation is as an educator during the day. So as a school counselor, I'm a mandated reporter. So there's certain, and I have to document all my interactions with my students when something's revealed to me and report if that's, if the situation calls for it. Now, I have to document every single interaction with these students. And I also work closely with teachers. So the relationship that we have with teachers oftentimes, because they're in the classroom, they're at ground level, they are working with these students. They have relationships with these students. And oftentimes, we let them know the support efforts that are in place to help these students depending on the situation. So the teachers are actually on a need-to-know basis. There are some things that I can't reveal to them, but there's some, some things that, the things that I can't reveal to them are sensitive, sensitive information. Okay? So basically, I'm looking at this like, that, all of my documentation can be FOIA'd. Right? But I don't go around telling the teachers all of the personal business on the students. As I said, they're on a need-to-know basis. So I'm looking at it the same way. There should be some type of protocol because all information is not the same. Some information, because of the sensitive nature, it could be very damaging letting that information out at certain points in the process. Again, it's not to say that information shouldn't be FOIA'd. And it doesn't really speak to a lack of intentionally not being transparent with the public who put us here in the first place. But the public also put us here because they trust us. They have a certain trust. And there's certain information, because of the sensitive nature, like, there should be a protocol in place as to how this is revealed.
Thank you. So I'll just say a few words, and then we're gonna take a roll call vote. I agree that this has nothing to do with the FOIA. This, much of this language is in our code of conduct. So this is much of the language that we have already agreed to as a board. And I'm disappointed that it has been blown up to a large degree, in my opinion. I think that as a board member, I want to be informed. I want to know what's going on. And I have appreciated, Dr. Witherspoon, when you've taken the time to craft an email, just giving us a little bit of information. And I know what to do with that email is to think about it. If I have questions, I'm gonna call you directly. And then wait for the next bit of communication. And that usually happens. So this is reaffirming our work together as a board, which is very important for us to do. And reaffirming the oath that we took as a board. It's very consistent with the legal boundaries. And thank you for consulting with our attorney to make sure that's the case. And so with that, I'd like to take a roll call vote.
I'd like to speak again.
I have another comment as well. Go ahead.
I'd like to make two points, one about transparency and one about legality. The board attorney with whom you spoke, Dr. Witherspoon, that view may not be shared by other lawyers as indicated to me by the fact that the Illinois ACLU has expressed interest in looking at a possible legal challenge in the event this resolution's adopted. So it is not legally clear for my colleagues. But on the issue of transparency, Pat, Pat Savage Williams, you said, "As a board member, I want to be informed." So do the members of our public. Okay? And let me give you a recent example of how this played out. Dr. Witherspoon sent an email to the board about why it was that the decision had been made about the Hebrew program, which I did not disclose to anyone. But shortly after Dr. Witherspoon sent that to the board, Pat, you sent to the board an email saying, "This is for the purpose of helping us understand why this decision was made, so please don't share it." And I wrote back to you, you may recall, "If this, if this email will help us understand why the decision would be made, why wouldn't we want to share it with the public so that they would understand why the decision was made?" And you said, "We will release information at the appropriate time and in the appropriate manner and the appropriate content." And that's not transparency. And that's what I think is the spirit motivating this resolution that it makes it so offensive to me as a representative of the public.
So what I'm gonna say to you, Jonathan, is that I think it's inappropriate for you to make decisions independently, to release information to the public as we are, as the administration is working through issues and how and what gets stated. I think, I think as a board member, I don't think that's your role. So we can agree to disagree. That's fine. But I don't, I don't, I just don't think that's your role.
But we can't agree to disagree if you're gonna pass a binding resolution that I have to adhere to as a board member.
There's nothing in this, this, this resolution, really. If you read this, this
I read it.
This is from the code of, this is from, this is from our code, this is from our oath.
No, this is, goes way beyond it.
No.
Well.
And it's a simple matter of comparing the two documents to understand that there are phrases in this resolution that are lifted from our board agreements, existing board agreements, by the way, that have been in place for, since all of us have been on the board in some form or another. And then there are other provisions in this resolution that have absolutely no basis in either those board agreements, in the Illinois Association of School Boards' code of conduct, in the language of Illinois law, the public policy that I described to you that's embodied in Illinois law. The notion that one-way communications between the president, members of the board, and the superintendent is somehow cloaked in privilege as this, as this resolution sets forth on a going-forward basis. We're just pre, we're gonna establish the presumption in direct contravention of FOIA is, is an enormous problem. And for board members to sit next to me and mutter ridiculous under their breath is an embarrassment to me. I'm embarrassed to be a member of this board where all of you have undergone your mandatory FOIA and OMA training, and you cannot appreciate the significance of this. And with all due respect to your jobs as a communications person, as a teacher and counselor at a high school, the scenario you described, for example, Jude, of course, student data and information does not get released because, as a matter of fact, that is one of the explicit exceptions under FOIA. Confidential nature relating to students, relating to certain personnel matters. None of that gets disclosed, and FOIA provides for it. But what we've done here is we've created a different, extra-legal exception to FOIA that our legislature has not adopted. And that's not, not something we're entitled to do because we don't sit in the state legislature. We are members of this board, and we are bound by the state law. And I'm enthusiastically embrace the idea of the ACLU looking more closely into this. I think it's, it's embarrassing to me that that should be required in order to make this point. But it's significant enough. enough. And, and to make fun of this as an issue really undermines an incredibly important issue in our society, especially in this day and age, especially given the current political climate nationally. I, I'm, I'm really struck by, you know, how, how we're here at the most local of political levels, having this discussion. It, it really saddens me.
Let me, let me just respond. You know, what, I did mutter under my breath that this is ridiculous. And what I was thinking was that it's ridiculous that we've gotten to this point. Why are we here? Why is this even, why, why is the board even considering a resolution necessary? It's because we have a member that showed no discretion and violated, in my view, violated our code of conduct. And so, you know, we have very limited things we can do to remedy that situation. And this is an attempt to remedy it. And now we're blowing this up into a civil, what'd you, First Amendment issue and, you know, illegal and all this. That's what I think is ridiculous, that we're even having to discuss this. The whole thing is ridiculous. You know, if, if we would just mind our business and do what makes sense and what we all took an oath to do, we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't be wasting our valuable time and energy on this kind of thing. Now, if there's another way to resolve this, to resolve the real issue, I'm all for it. You know, I have no interest in, in having us in a lawsuit with the ACLU or anybody else. That is not the intent. I have no interest in being non-transparent, on the contrary. I want us to be incredibly transparent and accountable to our community. And I think this board, for the, what, going on, going on 10 years, going nine years that I've done, been on this board, I think we've done that. And we'll continue to do so as long as I sit here. So if there's another way out of this, I'm all for it. But let's not lose sight of why we're here and what this is at least attempting to address. And let's not try to conflate it and blow it up into some, something that it was never intended to be. I find that offensive.
Monique?
So, so I'm, I'm never embarrassed to be a part of this board. Actually, I'm proud to represent this community and be a part of the board.
I did not say I was embarrassed to be a part of the board.
So, and I'm not embarrassed now to have this discussion. However, I am disappointed that as adults, we can't find a resolution. So I'm, I'm disappointed that no one is offering an alternative, other than, "I can't accept this," or, "I won't accept this," or, "I'm not voting for this." But no one is saying, "Here's an idea of how we can communicate better with more integrity."
I think-
No one is offering that. I didn't interrupt.
I'm not, sorry.
And so, you know, I don't, no one, or the two of you are not offering that. So, you know, I'm, I'm sitting here saying, and I introduced this last week, and I said, you know, I, I, I think we need to reaffirm how we communicate, moving forward with integrity. I, you know, no one brought ideas to the table to say, "Yep, you're absolutely right. This is, this is my part in this. This is what I should be held accountable for. This is how we go forward. This is what we should do." And so now that something is presented, you know, we're taking it to the, to the 11th hour, or we're taking it overboard, but we're not offering a resolution. So we, you know, we wanna threaten lawsuits. We wanna say that the other people are gonna look into this. But we're not acting on behalf of what's best for this district or the community at this point in how we communicate. So-
Well, I for one-
Disappointed with my embarrassment, very proud.
I am, I am never embarrassed to be on this board. I'm embarrassed that we've reached the point where there seems to be a fundamental confusion around the application of law to the proceedings of this public body. That's what I'm embarrassed about. I don't think it's ridiculous to be having the discussion. I can't remember the other word you used at the end of your remarks, Mark, but, you know, I think this is a highly valuable discussion. I think it's critically important in this day and age. My regret is that we didn't have this discussion at our board self-evaluation, evaluation session. A discussion around these things is exactly the kind of thing we should have been discussing in our board self-evaluation session. And we didn't, because at the time, the board president had information that she then revealed to us several days or the week after our board self-evaluation session, rather than giving us the opportunity to begin that discussion with the assistance of a facilitator from the Illinois Association of School Boards. And I think that would have had a great deal of value in revisiting our board agreements. And in the past, when we've developed revisions to our board agreements, we've always begun that discussion in a board self-evaluation session, and we've continued it in public meetings, where we've had discussion around those agreements and then adopted them. This is not an example of that sort of exercise. This is a, a one-sided, here's the resolution, we're gonna lay it on you tonight. We saw at the same time the public got it, at some point late in the day on Thursday. And this is our first open discussion, and it's, in fact, not even listed as a discussion item. It's listed as an action item, which is also contrary to the way we usually operate as a board. I wasn't even ready to get into the process points here, because I think the substantive issues are so significant, that's most deserving of attention. I don't think at this late hour, it's my obligation to craft new board agreements when I thought the prior board agreements were perfectly fine. And I don't think a resolution that attempts to circumvent state law while parroting some of the language, but not all of the language of those board agreements and our code of conduct is the answer to the problem that you've identified. But that's all we have in front of us. And now it's late, and, you know, if you want to vote on it, be my guest. But I am not voting for this resolution.
Fine, you've made that clear. Yeah.
And, you know, if we need, if we need to put it off, you know, you guys put the motion on, on the floor. There's a second. So unless there's gonna be an amendment, let's do the vote.
There's a motion on the floor. And, and it's been seconded. So I, I will call for a vote.
Vaughn?
No.
Claude?
Yes.
Vivian?
No.
Monsell?
Yes.
Metz?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes. Thank you.
The superintendent, I really wanted to reiterate one thing, because it really would trouble me that anybody would, would listen to this or leave this room with this under confusion. This district will not violate the Freedom of Information Act, period. We will honor all FOIA requests, as we always do. We will examine them, as we always do, under the legal pretense, are there any exemptions or not? And we will, we will be 100% faithful to that transparency and, and to that law. I, I personally do not interpret what you as a board are trying to do tonight as a way to circumvent or break the law. And we will not do that. And, and I must tell you, it troubles me to suggest that my administration would do that.
Me as well. And towards that end, I would appreciate seeing written legal opinion from our counsel on how this resolution comports with the First Amendment, the Illinois Freedom of Information Act, and the Open Meetings Act. And if, if, as you say, that's our counsel's opinion, I think, you know, I'd like to see that in writing. I'd like to, to see the, the full extent of that opinion shared with every member of this board, and probably the public, since, you know, your, your reference to that consult has, has waived any attorney-client privilege with respect to that opinion. And indeed, then we'll, we'll, you know, see what the ACLU has to say as well.
Okay, we're gonna move on. The next item is approval of new courses, course changes, and course deletions. Motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Discussion?
Discussion.
I have a follow-up question from our discussion of this last meeting, which I think may have been, was confusing to me and may have been confusing to the public. And it has to do with geometry. Now, my understanding, get me, set me straight if I'm wrong, is in, in the old days, we had geometry and geometry honors at, at the freshman level. And some students placed into geometry honors because of how well they'd had done in eighth grade algebra, and some placed in geometry. And then, now we have advanced geometry honors, which eighth graders take, right? Which is a very different course from geometry. And this will be even more different now that we're infusing the algebra into geometry, right? Okay. So going forward, a night, since we're not deleting geometry honors as a course by this, by this vote, we are revising geometry to change its, to offer an honors, a path to honors to that. Since geometry honors will continue to exist, well, that is, I want to confirm that geometry honors will continue to exist to this extent. I don't care if there's a separate geometry honors course, separate from advanced geometry. But I don't think that any ninth grader who wasn't ready in eighth grade for advanced geometry, but is in ninth grade, I want to make sure that no ninth grader who's in that position is gonna be, as a result of what we do tonight, deprived of the opportunity to take advanced geometry, whether with a group of other ninth graders or with eighth graders. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Vivian?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Metz?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, next item is adoption of 2017 tax levying.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Metz?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The next item is adoption of capital improvement program.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Monsell?
Yes.
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 Vaughn?
Yes.
Vivian? Yes.
Yes. The next item is the acceptance of fiscal 2017 audit report.
Moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Metz?
Yes.
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 Vaughn?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item is meeting date change, the joint board meeting from February 12, 2018, to May 21, 2018.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Vaughn? Yes.
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 Yes. Next item is the consent agenda, which consists of the treasurer's report from October 2017, approval of bills, personnel agenda, appointments to staff, support staff, nutrition services, change in status, overload, stipends, maternity, paternity, leave, certified, retirement exempt, and there's an addendum. Yes, there's an addendum that includes resignation and retirement.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Vaughn? Yes.
Vivian? Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we are at old and new business. All right. So we'll just close. We're kind of at a late hour. So, thank you very much. Have a nice break. We will see you all in 2018.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.